Good night, Ashley.
Is it six thirty? So we will call the Tuesday, August 7th, meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I note that we have the entire board here, rating a quorum. The first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the July 3rd meeting. Any comments or corrections to the minutes? Motion? Somebody that was here on July 3rd?
I move to accept the minutes from the July 3rd, 2018 meeting.
Okay, Mrs. Womack makes a motion to approve the minutes. Can we have a second, please?
I'll second.
Mr. Saul offers the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. The next item is consideration of the minutes from July 17th. Any comments? Can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
To approve the minutes of July 17th.
Very good. Mrs. Chaffin makes a motion to approve. May we have a second?
I'll second you.
Mr. Saul makes the second. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. The first item on the agenda tonight is FDP 18-002 Copper Leaf Number 18 Final Development Plan. And the planner is Bill Skinner.
Probably seen me flying around the room. I'm coming up to speed in a hurry. Okay, so Bill Skinner for the Planning Division. This is item FDP 18-002 Copper Leaf Filing Number 18 Final Development Plan. It's a final development plan inside, they provided a lovely graphic for us, the larger planned community copper leaf. They're gonna point it out to us, but essentially we're looking at the neighborhood directly below the word "plan" on that graphic. You will recall, this came to the Planning Commission three, four weeks ago, and we said, "We're gonna pull back and come back again another day." There have been some discussions. Your plan set is the original plan set because we don't have a complete FDP with all the revisions, but the last page of your 11 by 17 set of plans has a red bubble around the lots that have changed. The text in the staff report has been updated to, oh, actually, it's on the very, turn it over, it's on the back of the back page. There you go. The text in the staff report has been updated to reflect the new numbers. The quick part of this, we are talking about a final development plan in copper leaf that is gonna be generally situated south of Quincy, north of East Radcliffe, between Malta Street and Piccadilly Street, with the exception of the upper, the northeastern corner, there's a squareish rectangular parcel up there that's still out for development, not a part of this. It's totally in L shape as depicted in your staff report. The proposal after revisions is for 122 paired homes, product coming to market, we've seen it in other proposals recently, in 61 separate structures, so 122 split in half, and 108 single-family detached homes on the lots that are largely the southern part of this proposal. There's a concurrent plat application running to create these lots and all the tracks and infrastructure for roads and so forth. Those don't come to the Planning Commission, that'll proceed straight on to the board. This being an FDP of, an FDP as part of a PDP approved later than 1999. There is an option for this FDP to go onto the board streamlined on consent unless someone from the public pulls it out into a public hearing. I just, so far, the staff hasn't had any indication that that's gonna happen, but we do like to lay out the process for you at a time. Anything that the Planning Commission cares to add or subtract from the staff report tonight, staff will add into the staff report as it goes forward to the board for discussion, if you so choose to do. Pretty typical for, I don't say, it's, this is in line with copper leaf FDPs we've seen before. I wanna jump right to any kind of an issue that we have when we get into the conditions, but I'd like to know, just before I go into that, do the planning commissioners have any questions about things you read in the staff report before we get to this? Thank you.
Yes, but I have a question. The open space comments? I was a little concerned when I saw these beginning comments that some things that are being constructed are out of current standards, rule or curves, and sending ADA folks out diagonally into the street. And this is probably the old plan, but I guess if this hasn't been developed yet, why are we sending people diagonally out into the street when safety standards or something dictate today that you go straight across?
Okay.
Could you explain that to me? Or maybe at the appropriate time, open space needs to come up and talk about this?
Okay, I can, I can take the short pass at it, and then we can talk to the copper leaf team about it in some more detail if you wish. I know they have a presentation they're happy to give tonight, and they do like to stand up and answer questions when we give them the opportunity. The quick answer on that is Copper Leaf has a development agreement that goes back quite a few years. If I were to go over to the other binder on the table, I can tell you the date we signed it. It ties the county and the developer, it's an agreement by both parties, ties us to the standards in place at the time the development agreement was signed. There may be some additional negotiation on those standards, but it is considered largely binding on both parties. Does that mean there's opportunities to go above and beyond or agree to do something outside the development agreement? I mean, suppose that's always a possibility. Those development agreements run for an agreed-upon period of time, then they expire, and then we go back to the table again or renew, depending on how it goes. This one will expire in December of 2019, but until that time, it's considered binding on both parties. Please feel free to ring that up and discuss it. Open space has gone out of their way and sent a representative here tonight kinda last minute for us if we wanna talk to Ray Wynn from Open Space either, too. That's the short answer. We have an agreement in place and everyone's sticking to it. It's, it's open for more discussion if you wanna discuss it.
I, I guess I don't understand that, but.
Okay.
All right, well, I'd like to talk with Open Space when the time comes.
Okay, understood. Staff concerns with this one. The general layout of the development, the structures proposed, the amount of open space provided in terms of, you know, just in the open space, we're fine with all of that. We've had some concerns about trail connections that are shown on the PDP, and then as things develop out, the trail connections are shifting. The PDP has, calls them out as schematic or conceptual, so it's understood they may move around, but the intent of the connections, we just don't wanna get the connections in place. Some of those discussions, they've, the development team has provided answers that staff goes, "Okay, you got some teeth in that." Other ones, we haven't come to an agreement on. And then there are other situations, such as in your staff report, there is a condition number six where staff did something we don't usually do, and we asked the copper leaf team to provide a connection completely off-site that goes to the west and links the Sky Vista Middle School back to the neighborhood. Copper leaf team agreed to do that. It's gonna require some creative planning on how they build out Radcliffe. They'll be building a sidewalk before they come back. Well, no, can't say that. I don't know how that's gonna go. But anyway, we're gonna get that connection before we get the adjacent neighborhoods. That's a little unusual. The reason I go into this is I wanna convey that we've got things we'd like to see more of, and we don't have agreement, but in some situations, the team has been willing to say, "You know what? We're gonna do this other thing for you because you've asked for it," even though they may have been able to go to the development agreement and say, "No, we don't have to and we don't want to." So I guess what I'm trying to say is it sounds like there's goodwill available, and let's just discuss things. Conditions of approval, there's seven of them. Your planner, me, came to the first hearing with five conditions of approval. We came to this one with seven. Three between the lines, condition number three and condition number six are the same thing. I should've removed three in the first place. It doesn't hurt to have it in there, but, you know, I, just so you know, if anyone else notices, I've asked for the same thing twice. Yeah, I admit it, we asked for the same thing twice.
So the, the trail connections have not, are still omitted?
Some are there, some extra, that don't have to be there, being provided, but they're part of the overall community, so eventually they're gonna be there. They're coming in a little early, and there, there's one that we're really interested in that's not there yet. Now, we've been talking to Copper Leaf, Copper Leaf's been talking to us, they'd like to talk to you about that. It's not like they're just ignoring the matter, they, they have some of their reasons they'd like to discuss it.
Okay, and the other thing that jumped out at me were Mr. Wynn's comments from Open Space about the sidewalk list, and I realize, I guess the county standards allow for more narrow ones, but I guess that's something that we may have to take up formally at another time because it does seem like people think it's much easier to have to have a more usable sidewalk if it's wider.
Yeah, and what you're bringing up dovetails into what Commissioner Chaffin said earlier. The narrower sidewalks were permissible under the development agreement. The county-wide engineering standards have evolved to a wider design, and generally, the industry at large has moved that way, not all jurisdictions, many of them, but the development agreement allows for these options. I don't know that we've done an excellent job of informing Open Space that development agreement was in play until after they issued those comments, so they may have been in the blind there, and I don't want that to reflect negatively on them. I've said that, they have a point. In today's world, those sidewalks would be considered a little skinny.
I have a question. So if you were to ask for the additional six inches per the new county standard, would that then cause them to essentially redraw this entire thing to create the easements to fit additional space in?
Let's ask them when they come up. Generally speaking, you're adding more pavement on the ground, and detention facilities tend to be calculated on how much imperviousness are you laying on the surface of the earth?
I'm just saying, in terms of, you have to have an easement, right, for the public ride.
Right.
You've plotted your lots and accounted for that based on your standards, so if you had to go increase these in any sort of significant manner across this development, it would cause you to significantly redraw it, wouldn't that?
Depending on how, depending on where they're at, that possibility exists. It may also require going into the drainage report and the detention system calculations and looking at that if you bump over a particular threshold.
Right, so it's not simple?
It may not be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jason?
Yeah, Jason Reynolds with Planning Staff. To Commissioner Latzis' question about the amount of space required in terms of right-of-way, the standard is a 50-foot right-of-way per the development agreement. However, 50 feet of right-of-way could accommodate a five-foot sidewalk.
Yep, there's variability. Some places, it may be, there may be plenty of space to do it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay. Well, Mike is here from KB Homes, project manager. Project manager for KB Homes. He's gonna go through their presentation as always, if questions come up. If we get anything from the, I don't think we have members of the public in the room, but if we had any, like a chance to address anything that comes up with that, too.
All right.
Okay. Hi there, my name is Mike Chadwick, and I'm a project manager for KB Homes. And actually, I built the Copper Leaf Bristol Cone project right there, which is very similar to the paired project that we're gonna build right here. And it's one of KB's largest, quickest sellers that we offer through the Denver metro area. With me tonight are Daniel and Richard Frank of SQRD, who we are purchasing the property from, Tess Hogan of Innovative Land, excuse me, consultants who are our engineers, and Dylan Dederman from North Design Group, who did some work on the park. So as Bill outlined, this is the development that we're looking at right now. What we're proposing to do is the 122 paired homes here and 108 single-family homes here. We were originally scheduled to come to the Planning Commission on July 17th, but we had some issues right along this property boundary right here, and because of the inability to affect a agreement with that property owner, we've had to trim those lots out, so we've reduced the total number of single-family lots to 108. As part of this development, we will be building Malta and Radcliffe to tie into South Piccadilly, and we'll be putting in a traffic calming feature, which is a median, so people can't turn left out of the development into Piccadilly and cause a safety issue there. Let's see, what else we got to talk about there? Oh, and on this parcel L, that seems to be a topic for trail connection, this representation is an older product, but currently, the southern portion of this development is in for review for a multifamily project and not for a commercial project. So if this was a regional shopping center, was planned originally, then the trail connection to that would make sense. However, it's not being planned as that, and it's gonna be more of a linear development along Piccadilly and Quincy, similar to the retail that's being developed on the east side of Quincy right here. So a little earlier, we talked about that. We're on 38.3 acres, we have 6.1 dwellings per acre average density, total 222 units now, or 221 units. We are providing a .65-acre park and a designated tot lot, and approximately 9.24 acres of this will be common area, not open space, but common area open that won't be developed, and it'll be used for drainage tracks, additional street landscaping and those type of things. 230 units? Oh, thank you, 230 units. So we're probably all familiar with Copper Leaf. The Franks have done a wonderful job in development of this community, and it's a very sought-after community to build in for the, for the building community here in Colorado. There you see some of the amenities that show up, and that were dedications to the original FDP process and the requirements of that which they have met and exceeded. Tonight, we have three issues that we'd like to talk about that were raised in the staff report, which is the trails, which seems to be the largest issue, the parking, and then the open space comments, and the open space dedication. So there's a lot of words on this slide, but I'll just try and summarize for you. So we are proposing a trail connection that will tie into South Malta and East Radcliffe, and that will go all the way to Piccadilly Street. A third connection is being discussed that will link the middle school to these developments with the trail connection on the south side of Radcliffe, and it will connect basically from Himalaya all the way to Piccadilly. As we've talked about in a lot of different contexts, the trail connection to parcel L and parcel K is not feasible. It was shown on the original FDP plan when the, the plan for that was a little larger commercial area, but given the extreme grade difference that we have there, it's just not a possibility. We have provided some additional trails, we're proposing another trail that would help link the development to Quincy, which would provide a closer link to the commercial that will be developed. And then, one of the bigger issues that we'll run into is that, go back a slide, a couple of slides. The residential community that's here will be in a completely different HOA than will be maintaining and keeping the park that'll be located right here, and it's not preferable to have this community fund and pay for that park for the use of those who are not party to that HOA and that contribution. So this is looking at the developments and the labeling of the parcels. This is parcel K that we're developing. Parcel H is currently being developed by Richmond Homes. Richmond Homes is also looking at this parcel currently for possible development here. This is the middle school, and the, one of the concessions that the team has made is to make a connection from the existing sidewalk in front of the middle school down to the construction that we're going to commence with along Radcliffe and Malta. We will have, on the KB portion of this, and KB is building all of this, and we'll be building the backbone spine infrastructure for this, we will be installing the eight-foot trail along here, here, and Piccadilly to match up to that stop right there. Ten foot, sorry. It's a 10-foot trail in the template. One of the issues that I talked about, that the grade difference between the two parcels makes it fairly impossible and not feasible to build a sidewalk that could comply with the ADA criteria through here, and the connectivity would only be to more residential, which doesn't seem feasible. So with the trail connections that we're making along the perimeter of the property and internally, we feel that the walkability of the site is, is more than what was contemplated. One of the later additions that we have come up with is, this is South Nederland Court, which is the very east northwest, or, excuse me, north-south street in the paired development, and we have the ability to tie this sidewalk into the sidewalk, sidewalk along Quincy that will aid in the walkability and connection to the commercial area right here. Another issue that we had early on was a parking letter from the sheriff that was talking about not having enough visitor and service provider parking, and we since have gone back to the sheriff and we have a rescinded letter, and they're fine with the connectivity we have and parking, and we basically showed them this graphic where we have all the additional on-street and parking areas to service the community, and they were satisfied with that. The last part that we were looking at here is the Copper Leaf PDP does not require an open space dedication from this project right here because all the lands, open space dedication was previously done during other developments during Copper Leaf, which include the very large rec center and pool that are there, and other facilities that have been built. In addition, there's a dog park that will be coming along later that is proposed right near Radcliffe and Piccadilly. And we are providing the half-acre neighborhood park, but we emphasize that it's a neighborhood park for this development. And again, this is the basic outline that we have here. This is the park that we'll be providing, the nine-plus acres of open area that we are planning in here is perimeter landscaping to buffer the road and the homes from the road, and to help with the drainage around the project. And that is the park right there that will be developed with the tot lot outlined, as you can see there. And this is just a illustrative view of what the park is intended to look like with the tot lot area in the middle that ties the single-family to the south, to the paired product to the north. And that is my presentation, but we're available for any questions that we might have.
Who's going to maintain the nine acres of the perimeter?
The HOA that will be responsible and be contributed to by the.
Would it be one HOA that's?
Correct. Well, and in the situation that we, we came into in Copper Leaf Filing 12, is that the Copper Leaf Master Association is responsible for major snow plowing and also for trash collection and the concrete alleyways. We have a sub-association that is taking care of all the landscape maintenance, including the front yards for the filing 12. In this project, we anticipate that we'll have a similar composition of HOAs over the paired units, and then a more traditional homeowner taking care of their yard maintenance in the single-family development.
So there'll be one set of couples?
They'll be subject to the Copper, Copper Leaf Master Association criteria and the sub-association, which have the same criteria, just have different responsibilities for maintenance.
Okay. I have a question about roofing. Can you address that?
I can try. We're not at the roofing stage yet, but have you been in Copper Leaf filing 12?
Well, I just noticed in this FDP that it refers to 20-year roofing for a single family, 25-year roofing for paired homes, and then when I looked at the Copper Leaf design guidelines, which are available online, which were dated from July of 2014, it has 30-year roofing required with a list of specific products, so why would a paired home have superior roofing? And that's not from, that's not very good roofing.
I would tell you that neither one of them are gonna have different roofing criteria. We have the same supplier that supplies for the, for the single-family and for the paired. We have the same supplier that supplies for the single-family and for the paired. And right now, we're looking at a 30-year composite shingle for the homes.
That's not what it states in here, I guess. I feel it should be consistent. It's 30-year roofing for the single-family.
That's a minimum standard. We're doing 30-year on both.
Okay, because that's what the design guidelines state.
Yeah, we can exceed that. We just have to meet that minimum criteria, so we're going to exceed that with the 30-year roof.
And on the paired homes, who's responsible for replacing the roof?
The homeowners. They own a few simple lot.
So they have to do it, because your design is basically one roof, so they would...
The way that the units are, there's a definite split between the units. It doesn't have a continuous roof.
One half of it could be done one way and one half another way.
But you still have to go through the HOA approval criteria and the architectural review committee before you could do that. So that's where you have the gotcha, that it will look the same and be of the same quality in materials.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the areas in most communities are much more strenuous than the building code or that the typical jurisdiction would impose on the builder or homeowner. And that's done by purpose, so that we have a better quality and a longer-lasting look that will go on for years and not just be short-lived.
These are going to be small lots, and you are providing front yard landscaping. Is there enough light to do backyard landscaping?
That is up to the homeowner. I build the same product all over different parts of the metro area, and yes, it's up... The individual homeowner can landscape their rear yards and then use them that way.
Any other questions?
So if you're doing 30-year, 30-roofing, 30-pound roofing or whatever?
30-year roofing.
Yeah, why is it not specified in here?
I didn't write that document, but I can just tell you with KB and the Master Association requires for the roofing.
Well, it's just, that's what it is, and that's what the design guidelines for Copperleaf. I think that should be corrected.
Well, I can guarantee you it's a 30-year roof.
And then can you explain to me the ADA, the going diagonally out into the street?
I'm not the engineer outside, but I can tell you it does meet Jefferson County. Sorry, I worked there for 20 years. It's hard for me to not say county without the word Jefferson in front of it. Chuck Haskins will address that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, and I'd like to thank county staff. They've been wonderful work with, as always.
Okay, we have a sign-in sheet that has, nobody's signed in, but that doesn't mean there isn't someone here. We'll open the public hearing. Saying none, we will close the public hearing. Are there any other questions from the planning commission?
I'd like Chuck Haskins to come up, please.
Yes. Mr. Haskins.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Chuck Haskins, Engineering Services Division. I think the two issues were the width of the sidewalk not meeting ADA requirements and the direction of the sidewalk, and neither of those statements are true. ADA allows for what was referred to as diagonal, they're called apex ramps. They serve both directions on low-volume roads. These are local-to-local intersections, very low-volume roads. Secondly, the standard that they're using is the current standard. It's a six, seven-inch interval curb, curb, gutter, and sidewalk with a 311 sidewalk. Minimum ADA standards are three feet. So I'm not saying it couldn't be wider, and staff will likely pursue wider sidewalks when we get through the developer's agreement with Copperleaf, but it does meet current standards, so.
Okay, and why is there this statement that this is unsafe?
I don't know. You'd have to ask the person who opined the safety. That was not engineering staff.
Okay, and are people building? I mean, this is just my curiosity. I'm sorry to take your time on this, but, you know, usually, they're not diagonal, handicap ramps out.
The curb ramps, they don't... Local-to-local intersections can be diagonal or they can be directional.
And what is the standard nowadays?
Either one of them is acceptable.
Okay.
Pursuant to the PROAG, which is a guideline for American Disabilities Act, that's for public rights of way. Either of them are acceptable. They really try to regulate the steepness and the width of the ramps, not the direction. You can put bidirectional ramps in, where you basically have eight ramps at a full intersection, or you can use these apex-type, where they come out in the middle of the radius, okay? On a higher-volume road, you'll definitely see more directional ramps. But on low-volume local-to-locals, these apex ramps are within the PROAG requirements.
I just wondered, the county put some in my neighborhood a couple of years ago, and stayed them all directional, and I don't have that much traffic in my neighborhood.
Yeah, there is a preference, directional. I think a lot of people like the directional, but both of them need the requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to make any other final comments?
No, ma'am.
Bring her back to the planning commission for any other considerations, comments, questions?
I'd like to ask Bill Skinner another question. So based on the rationale provided by the developer for not providing that, was it L to K or K to L connection, and that being multi-family versus retail, commercial, is that, what's the county's position? And I'm assuming you've heard that already, but is that, is there still an objection, you know, based on the fact that we have that comment in there twice? Yeah, I guess where does the county stand on that? I'm assuming you've heard that.
I understand the question, I think. I also understand the developer's response, I think, but the staff, it's still, as a, you know, as a staff, it certainly, it's a combined voice, and we'd still like to see some kind of a connection, if at all possible. It may simply come down to a difference of opinion when we get to the hearing with the determining body, which would be the board. Now, given that this has the potential to go on consent, I don't know exactly how that plays out. Maybe that turns into, maybe that condition stays in the staff report. We'd be happy to add additional comment to the staff report representing, it has to be a unified voice from the planning commission, please. But if there's additional direction to staff on this, we'll carry it forward to the board for you.
Yes, thank you. Did notice that Mr. Wen is here. Do you want to make any comments? Ray Wen from Open Spaces.
My name is Ray Wen. I'm with Rappahoe County Open Spaces. Part of the issue is that while providing the park is great, without access to the park, all you can do is sit from your balcony and look at the park. So it's kind of counterintuitive to the whole thing. As the master plan developer for Copperleaf as a whole, they're responsible for providing parks and access to parks. That's why, you know, there's no cash in lieu. Also, with regards to the quote-unquote "open space" that a gentleman referred to as basically the park and all the drainage, we don't really consider drainage as being open space. It's not really usable, and it doesn't really provide that much benefit to anybody except for drainage. So...
What is a typical size for a tot lot? Is there an optimum size, or is a half-an acre adequate? Or .6, whatever that is?
I mean, you know, we have a formula for that, but it's hard to tell, because there's, the development is definitely large enough to, you know, accommodate a bigger park. The question is the connection to the park. So, you know, if there's no connection, no access to the park, it doesn't really happily providing an amenity.
That's helpful. Thank you very much. Mr. Frank, do you want to comment?
Richard Blenk with South Quincy Residential Developers. First of all, as far as open space comments, you know, we've been in this project since, for about 15 years, about 14, 13, 14 years, and we've never had a comment before from open space. And they're coming in at a time when our project is nearly complete, but to sale over this piece of ground, we have a closing. I don't know if you want to put up the... I don't know how to run this thing. I can't read it. No, parcel I, Mike. So we have a closing on Thursday with Richmond on parcel I, which you saw a few months back. Stay on that. And then, so there's only two pieces of ground left for basically single-family type development, and the one you're seeing today, parcel K, and the one immediately west of that, which is parcel J, which is under contract to Richmond. So these are the last two pieces of land that, for a single-family, left in Copperleaf. And to ask us to change what we've been doing for 12, 14 years seems to be out of order. We don't have a requirement to build any particular-sized park. We choose to put parks in all those neighborhoods. We have a very large, very expensive, beautiful amenity package already in place in the elementary school and the middle school. The access to the park is just fine for the people that are going to live in that neighborhood. And, yeah, and the people that are going to live in that neighborhood are the ones who are going to pay for it. The connection between the two parcels, I couldn't hear what Bill said. I think what he said was that staff is still pretty adamant about having that connection to parcel L, and it's just impossible from a topo standpoint, except at the very northeast corner, right where he's pointing, we can make a connection there. And the idea of that connection is to get the people in this neighborhood over to the commercial. That's what we want to do. We want to get them to the commercial. We want to get them to their park. We don't want to get them into a multi-family development. We don't want the multi-family development coming into our neighborhood and using our facilities when they're not part of our community. So the sidewalk widths, we meet the standards. I think, you know, as time goes by, sidewalks always, you know, the standards always change. They get wider. But like staff said, we have a development agreement that we created 13, 14, whatever years ago, that set the standards. We didn't want to go through an 800-acre, 2,500, 2,700-unit project and have standards change on us as we went through it. So everything we've built in Copperleaf is the same standards as what we have here. That has always been approved by your group and the Board of County Commissioners. So unless there's any questions, that's my speech.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just not a big believer in that's the way we've always done it, and because we designed this 20 years ago, we ought to keep it the same. The world has changed, our vision of development in Rappahoe County has changed, and that's just all I want to say. I may vote for this, but...
Any other comments?
Adam Scher.
Have at it.
In the case of FDP 18-002, Copperleaf filing number 18, file development plan, we have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and any public comments presented at the hearing, and hereby move to recommend approval of this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to conditions 1 through 7 in the staff report.
Do we have a second for the motion? This is last. Second is the motion by Mr. Brownell. Any other comments, consideration? Otherwise, we'll call for a vote. Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. The motion carries. Five to two. Okay, the next item on the agenda is review of the Flapland Management Regulation, and Sulew from Engineering Services will bring it up to date. This is a public hearing.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I'll move this one here. Good evening, Planning Commission. Sulew, rescinding the Engineering Services Division. For this case before you tonight is LDC 18003, Amendment for Land Development Code for Updated Flapland Management Regulation. The hearing was not just in village on July 19, 2018, and also on I-17 scale on July 17, 2018. It's similar to what we did earlier this year. What proposed tonight is again to update the Flapland Management Regulation to a new date, which is September 28, 2018. This time, the new study, the new fly issue study is for Boxer, Alder Creek, and Caillou... Oh, thank you. Caillou de Ron. Yeah, also on the back of the staff report, you have this map. The dark blue showing the new delineation, and the light blue is showing the existing one. So there's minor changes. If you see the yellow line, the yellow line is the study boundary within Rappahoe County. And the updated map, we saw some more additional structure map within those three energy way. And during the 90-day appeal process, FEMA did not receive any appeals. County also sent the letter directly to every property owner, impact by this map changes. We also did not receive any calls. So the minors are, the changes are pretty minor. We are changing two portions of the call. One is the section 1-505, and the other is the section 12-205. We are proposing to change the day of the effective study and the maps from April 18, 2018, to September 20, 2018. Just five staff findings listed in the staff report. We're hoping you support this, and the case can be moved on to the VOCC. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, we need to, this is a public hearing, so we need to open the public hearing. We have a sign-in sheet for the Flapland consideration, and nobody has signed in. Anybody wish to speak? Saying none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission for consideration. Does anybody have any comments or wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. In the case of LDC 18... In the case of LDC 18-003, flood plan management regulations, land development code amendment, we find ourselves in agreement with staff findings 1 through 5, including all plans and attachments that set forth in the staff report dated July 12, 2018, and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners of the proposed code amendment to update the reference to the latest flood insurance study and flood insurance rate map dated September 28, 2018.
A second? Very good. Do you have a second? Mrs. Womack, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Melly, did you attend the hearing today?
I did.
Ah, would you give us an update?
Some things left to know, so. They actually came fully voted for pair, and they addressed all the issues that we had, and they, we both presented that they meet all the requirements, so commissioners said that, you know, because they met all the requirements, they have to vote yes.
So, that lot configuration was the same?
No, lot configuration will stand, and they don't feel that there'll be any impact on the Sixth Avenue for people merging in and out of traffic along those lots.
This was the proposal for the runway lots?
Yeah. Whatever it is.
Okay.
So, the only comment was that if you don't want those there, then there needs to be some sort of rules or laws passed within the county to limit those, those narrow blocks from people. So, however that happens, and then-
Well, I thought the first time that we've been outvoted and-
What was the vote? Was it unanimous?
Yeah, it was unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Interesting. Well, thank you for going.
Yes, we also did.
I mean, it is your backyard.
Just, Bill Skinner for planning again. There were four commissioners today. Nancy Sharp was excused and absent.
Okay. I guess my only other final comment about tonight, and I think we can adjourn the meeting because it's just a minute.